Good evening. This is a call order for the July 14th, 2025 City of Canal Winchester Planning and Zoning Meeting. Ms. McDonald, roll call please.
Rick Deeds. Joe Donahue.
Here.
Eileen Gooden.
Here.
Deborah McDonald, here. Steve Paulsgrove.
Here.
Brad Ritchie. Joe Wildenthaler.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, I move that Mr. Deeds and Mr. Ritchie be excused.
Motion made by Ms. Gooden, second by Mr. Paulsgrove. Roll call please.
Joe Donahue.
Yes.
Eileen Gooden.
Here, yes.
Deborah McDonald, yes. Steve Paulsgrove. Joe Wildenthaler.
Yes.
Time ends 7:01 PM. I'll need approval for minutes from April, so we haven't had a meeting of this commission since April, so I need April's minutes approved. So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Paulsgrove, second by Ms. Gooden. Roll call please.
Steve Paulsgrove.
Yes.
Joe Wildenthaler.
Yes.
Joe Donahue.
Yes.
Eileen Gooden.
Yes.
Deborah McDonald. Yes.
Now is the time for public comment for any items that are not on our agenda this evening. So if you're here to speak to us for an item that's not on the agenda, now will be your time. If you'll be speaking with us this evening, if there's any chance you'll speak to this commission, could you please stand, if you're able, and take an oath? So if there's any chance you're going to talk to us. Do you swear to be truthful in the testimony you give? Tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth. If so, please say, "I do."
I do.
Thank you. We do have an appeal on our agenda this evening, New Life Church. I'll turn it over to Mr. Moore for that appeal.
The appeal this evening is for proposed New Life Church development on the 6.09 acres of Growport Road. This is an appeal to the zoning administrators' interpretation for parking lot screening standards found in Chapter 1191.06. The application that's following this appeal is the site development plan for the church project in its entirety. If you want to skip ahead and take a look at that staff report, as I'm presenting the appeal and the applicant to discuss the appeal with the commission. The applicant was noted during their preliminary site plan review prior to submittal for the Planning and Zoning Commission that they needed to provide parking lot screening on all sides that abut residentially zoned properties, per Chapter 1191.06. The applicant has noted that the east and west sides of the property, while they join residentially zoned properties, the property to the east is the Columbus Metropolitan Library, which is not a residential use. In addition, there is existing property line, landscape buffer that exists photographed on the right. And then on the west side of the property, that parcel is zoned residential, but it is vacant, so no, again, no residential use. And it also consists of a property line, vegetation buffer as well. The applicant is requesting, again, appeal to this zoning section, 1191.06A, the first part of the sentence, which states off-street parking areas, off-street parking areas for more than five vehicles shall be effectively screened on each side which abuts a residential zone district. Up on the screen also, I have the green boxes. That would indicate the areas that the screening is deficient based off of staff's review of the site development plan application. Applicant's here to talk about the appeal with the commission, as well as a representative from Frost Brown Todd to go over the code and then the zoning administrator's determination that the screening requirement is necessary.
Okay. Is the applicant present? And, real quick, I'm sorry. So, I just want to state, there's five of us here this evening. So per city statute, there needs to be four positive votes for a motion to carry. So for all applications this evening, you'll need four positive votes for the application to carry. Okay, thank you. Please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Darby, my name is Greg Hesterman. I'm a pastor at New Life Church, and I also serve as a Realtor in my day job, as a volunteer pastor with the church. Andrew's done a great job of surmising what we're requesting. Probably the one aspect that I would, I would just add as part of our plea is, as a small or to medium-sized church, our funds are limited. And we're trying to make sure we're very good neighbors to everyone that abuts our property and beyond. To that effect, I've made contact with every neighbor to include the Columbus Metropolitan Library, not about this request, but just in general about our project. The addition of these berms and screening would add, in our mind, a significant expense that, in the end, doesn't change things really as far as the impact to our neighbors. Right now, the, my understanding of the requirement is to prevent headlights from going into our neighbors' living rooms, that sort of thing, which I fully appreciate. And that's why our plan currently has screening to the north and the south. But going to the east, as you can see in that picture number one, the Columbus Metropolitan Library, there is significant vegetation growth there already. The building actually sits forward of that sightline to the north. You can see the blue tarps there from the current construction site. That's the only aspect that could possibly have an issue, and that is a parking lot. Looking to the west, you can see in photo number two, is also highly, an even deeper vegetation barrier, if you will. That property, that parcel, is currently landlocked. I haven't had any contact with the neighbor since the last time I presented to this commission, seeking initial approval. But right now, there's no plans to develop that property. We do want to make sure we're good neighbors. We don't want to cause any undue issues in any way, shape, or form, but we do feel like this would be an added burden to us as a church, to add screening that effectively doesn't change the situation at all for our neighbors.
Thank you. Who owns the vegetation that's on both sides? Is that the adjacent property owners, or is that part of this parcel?
To the west is the Fiesel family, and to the east is the Columbus Metropolitan Library.
The vegetation's on both sides of the property line. It's like a fence row, so it's overgrown into both parcels.
Yes.
Any other comments, questions regarding this appeal?
Do you know roughly how much distance there is between what would be the edge of your parking lot in Screen One and the trees next to Columbus Public Library?
Andrew, could you bring up that site plan, please? I'm guesstimating right now, but looking at the parking spaces in each of those spaces is approximately 18 feet long. It's probably in excess of 150 feet from the parking lot to that property line.
And only slightly less going the other direction?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Anything, from your standpoint, as it relates to the code, the administrator's comments on this particular part of the code?
Absolutely. So the law department has reviewed it today. So, Lucas, can we agree with his interpretation, the administrator's interpretation of the code? Hope there's nothing to stop the applicant from coming back and asking for a variance from the requirement, but in terms of the actual screening requirement as determined in the code, we agree with Andrew on that interpretation.
Thank you. And, Mr. Moore, I don't recall in the last several years where we've provided a variance for something of this nature as it relates to landscape buffering around parking lots that are adjacent to residential areas?
No, this, this property's a little unique. It's essentially a flag lot where the frontage to the property is narrow, and the building placement and parking placement is essentially set back on the flag portion of the lot. A flag lot is typically a lot that has other adjacent lots in front of it, between it and the public gardenway. So this property is pretty characteristic to that. Also, it makes this kind of parcel unique is, currently it is set up as two separate parcels, and that it is completely surrounded on all four sides by residentially zoned property. I do not believe there's any compatible variance or site situation that the Planning and Zoning Commission has reviewed in the past with this configuration.
So, per code, we know the requirements for, for parking lot screening requirements per the code, and we'll hear the site development plan next, and I know that's, I believe, part of staff's recommendations. Are there any members of the commission that feel differently regarding this particular appeal as it relates to the lot and to the applicant's comments, asking us to essentially waive the requirements for this parking lot screening?
So I guess I have a question. You've asked us to waive the requirements. How is that different, and I'm going to look down at staff, from actually applying for a variance?
So this is saying the interpretation that the requirements are there is incorrect. It's saying that there is nothing to waive because the interpretation of the code as determined by staff was incorrect.
Okay.
A variance is relief from a code section that you don't want to meet or can't meet.
So the relief is really what you're seeking?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm curious as to why you've gone down the road of asking for an appeal to the administrator's decision versus just applying for the variance.
Until this moment, that was the guidance I was given to pursue, as a way to request this, I guess the word, right word is variance, right? Until this moment, I didn't understand that there's, that this would actually be a physical variance. And if that's what's necessary, we can do that. We're just trying to save the council's time, save our time, and so we can move forward with our bidding for the contract to get the work done.
So, Mr. Moore, Mr. here, if the applicant does come back and apply for a variance, we can, can we still hear the site development plan this evening, and they can come back and apply for that requirement before final development? Yes?
Okay.
Yeah, that portion's listed as a condition of their approval.
Okay.
So that would be, that'd be an option. I think the overall discussion should be, does, I think the applicant's inferring that there's 15 feet of landscaping on each side of the parcel already, so that, you know, the planning administrator's interpretation is incorrect, that they would require additional screening. Yeah, no, I, I mean, I feel that the additional screening requirement, part of the code should be there. And, you know, when it's, when it's winter, early spring, you know, that vegetation is much more sparse than it looks in these pictures. And so I do think there's considerations. While there's not, I know there's a lot, a long area there of, of land and an open area where there's not necessarily a home or businesses, but I do think the administrator's interpretation of the code is accurate.
Right. I, I would say that I believe that it's accurate. My concern is, if these trees and vegetation is primarily on the other parcel, what is to stop them from tearing that down, and then we don't have the screening that we really would require from this? So...
One, I mean...
I mean, I know it's the library. I get that. They're probably never going to take those trees down, but what if something happens and a tornado rips them all out, then what do we do? Just...
So I would encourage you to apply for a variance, and we can hear that. But I do think, you know, having this requirement as part of the code, and it's something that, I know the property's unique, but it's, it's something I think this commission feels strongly that should probably exist, or maybe not apply for the variance and just, and work with staff on the proper screening requirements to meet the code. But we can talk about that in the site development plan in the next application.
I understand you.
Cut?
Yes, thank you.
Do you want to draw on that?
No.
Okay.
All right. So I will turn it over to staff for our first application.
So for the site development plan application, we're actually going to have our summer intern, Diego, present it to you guys. So take it easy on him. If you have any questions, all three of us are here to help back him up, or both of us are here to help back him up, so.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. Good evening, commission. We're presenting here Site Development Plan Application, SDP 25005, for that New Life Community Church parcel, two parcels, 6.09 acres off Growport Road. The request is for a site development plan to approve an 8,162 square foot church The subject property is currently consisting of 6.09 acres on the south side of Growport Road. To the east of the subject property, as mentioned earlier, is the Columbus Metropolitan Library. And to the immediate west, north, and south of the property are residential homes. To the west is the, that vacant lot, and to the north and south are existing residential lots, some off of Growport Road, and to the south of the die-addition. All of those are zoned R3, low-density residential. And across the street off of Growport Road are the Canal Winchester Food Pantry and the United Church Homes Senior Living Facility. Both of those are zoned AR3 multifamily. The applicant is requesting approval, like I mentioned, to construct an 8,162-foot, square foot church building with a capacity of approximately 250 attendees. The site plan shows a single access drive off of Growport Road at 18 feet wide, leading to a 74-space parking lot located on the east side of the proposed building. The plans note that a sidewalk would be constructed along the Growport Road with a connection to the west side of the access drive, leading to the front entrance of the building, and a proposed access drive connection in the future with a shared driveway to the vacant landlocked parcel that's located to the west of the site, the Fiesel parcel that the applicant mentioned earlier. You can note here as well that staff recommends that parking lot screening be provided to the east and west of the existing parking lot, per Chapter 1191 of the zoning code. This is that appeal we discussed earlier, that we do, that staff does feel that that screening should be included in the site development plan approval. The proposed, there's also a lack of HVAC and electrical equipment shown on the plans right now. So staff recommends that, as part of the site development plan approval, the HVAC and electrical equipment be screened with a combination of fencing and landscaping to be determined by staff during the civil engineering review panel in the future. This is currently not shown in the site development plan application. The proposed landscaping plan shows a total of 35 trees. The north and south sides of the parking lot are shown have a three-foot mound with landscaping to screen the parking lot from the east and west. The lighting plan shows seven 18-foot light poles to be installed on their site. The plans to note that the light poles would be, have an additional base of two-and-a-half-foot concrete risers, which means that the total height would be 20 feet and 20.5 feet. Details for the anti-glare shields being available are shown on the cut sheets, but are not indicated to be included. So therefore, staff recommends that the anti-glare shields be installed in the parking lot lighting to screen the lighting from adjacent properties, the adjacent residentially zoned properties. Building lighting details have been provided in the cut sheets for commission review. The applicant is also not showing any signage as part of this permit application, and that can be discussed administratively at a future stage. Utilities-wise, the structure is being proposed to be served by sanitary sewer with the construction of a private force main leading from the building down Growport Road to an existing sanitary manhole located to the north of the library site that is shown with the green line in the PowerPoint. Staff recommends that the alignment and location of this private force main be further reviewed during civil engineering plan review for its final location and termination point. Water service is available to be, through a public water line on the north side of Growport Road, shown in blue. The applicant is proposing to install an extension to the public main to install a hydrant with the blue dot on the south side of Growport Road, and the domestic and fire taps are shown to come off of this extension to the proposed building. Stormwater is shown on-site with a proposed wet basin on the eastern side of the property to tie to an existing underground storm sewer that bisects the site. It's that easement in red dotted, as you can see in the PowerPoint. The basin is located to include a fountain. The site plan also shows several drainage sewers to be constructed on the property to drain the northeast side of the property to the basin and the west property line to the storm sewer. Yep. Just to kind of show the interior here, the elevation of the building, the sanctuary is proposed to have a capacity of 238 attendees. It will also have a reception area, a nursery, and some small conference rooms and offices. The applicant has proposed, provided elevations of the proposed building for review. The structure is shown to be constructed primarily out of fiber cement with a white board and baton finish. A stone veneer water table is present on three of the four elevations. And the north elevation features a larger stone facade treatment with a unique cross-pattern window. The front hallway is shown to have an oversized covered front porch, and windows are provided on every elevation. The roof is noted to be a dimensional asphalt shingle, black in color. The applicant has noted that they will be using residential-style trashcans for their waste service and property, so no dumpster screening would be required. The applicant has not noted where the HVAC and electrical equipment will be located on the proposed plans, as I noted earlier. So staff recommends that the HVAC and electrical equipment be appropriately screened with a combination of fencing and landscaping to be further reviewed during the civil engineering plan review. Here are some of the elevations, and then some of the renderings that are proposed of the property, as you can see that whiteboard and baton finish, and that fiber cement, and the black asphalt shingle roof. And then, lastly, the subject property currently consists of two parcels. They total 6.09 acres in total, and the site improvements, as noted on the plot plan, span both of the parcels. So staff recommends that both, both of the parcels be combined into one overall parcel prior to final occupancy of the building being issued. And then, finally, to conclude, our staff recommendation is that the site development plan, SDP 25005, be approved with the following conditions: that parking lot screening be provided per Chapter 1191; that the parking lot lighting features those anti-glare shields to screen, to screen lighting from adjacent properties; the details of the design and location of the private force main be further reviewed during the civil engineering plan review; that the HVAC and electrical equipment be screened with a combination of fencing and landscaping, to also be further determined by staff during civil engineering plan review; and lastly, that the two parcels be combined into one parcel prior to final occupancy of the site. Happy to answer any questions.
Great job. Questions for staff? So, I have a question. If, in the future, they decide to do a dumpster, and how would we treat the, the screening requirement, and what location of the property would that exist on today if they were not using residential trash containers?
So staff could review any future dumpster enclosure administratively?
Okay.
The location of the site is probably going to be determined by where the trash truck can actually access it efficiently. Looking at their site plan, it's most likely going to be located on this eastern side of the property. While this is probably the nicest place to put it, it's over top of the existing storm sewer, which is probably not from a construction standpoint the best place to put it. But from a site circulation standpoint, probably either in this corner or somewhere, you know, over here where a trash truck can pull in, service it, and then reroute next at the site. But when speaking with the pastor on providing information for the dumpster enclosure, they indicated they were going to use residential waste bins. That was their, their plan, as the dumpster enclosure did not seem necessary and added cost to their, their project.
Okay. Any other questions for staff?
Are the, the three handicap spaces that are shown on the diagram, is that sufficient?
I'm sorry?
The three handicap spaces that are shown on the diagram for parking, is that sufficient number?
That would be up to our chief building official to look at when he's doing his commercial plan review. I also, sorry, Lucas was reminding me, the applicant is showing an 18-foot-wide driveway. When talking with Madison Township Fire, they're going to be requiring the 18-foot driveway be upped to a 24-foot-wide driveway. That information has been communicated with the applicant already, and it's something that staff can do administratively during civil engineering review, but did want to make the commission aware of it.
Yeah, so the handicap parking is based on the occup, the final occupant mode of the building. So what they're showing right now is preliminary occupancy. So, once we determine final occupancy, we'll make sure that we have the required number of ADA spaces.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant, or for the staff? Anything the applicant wishes to add?
Probably the only thing I would say is, with the lighting, one, we were in full agreement on the staff recommendations, short of the, the parking lot variance, or the screening variance that we already discussed. And we anticipate taking care of all those things in the next phase, just as we move forward with the engineering.
So, you're okay with the recommendations, and you'll work with staff on the parking lot screening, how you want to go about, whether it's seeking a variance or meeting that?
Yes, yeah. It's all very reasonable. And all the other recommendations were things that we were already expecting because of our conversations with Andrew. So, none of those are a surprise to me.
Any questions for the applicant?
I have one. So you have an exit door out of the sanctuary to the, to the west of the...
To the west.
To the, to the back. Is that going to be an emergency exit only?
Yes, yes.
Because there's a light there, but there's no lighting pad or sidewalk?
No, our plan was just to have that for, for now, you know, in case we decide to, you know, extend the building someday. That would only be for an emergency exit.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I can't address the trash, just so everybody understands. With our church design, we don't have a kitchen, you know. Our, the amount of refuse we actually produce is very minimal, considering during the week, we have a staff of about four to five people just doing paperwork. And then on the Sundays, it's predominantly, you know, if we, anything, we may have a bag or two just from bringing in breakfast, that sort of thing. So rarely do we have a reason for a dumpster. In our previous building, we had a dumpster, and it rarely got filled, and our, the dump truck tore up our parking lot. So we're trying to avoid that this time.
Thank you.
As far as the staff recommendation goes this evening, I would recommend that the commission maybe discusses recommendation number one a little bit further with the parking lot screening with the applicant, just to provide some clarity on if there would be future support for a variance request, because based on the way the staff recommendation is structured this evening, I would recommend that all five of the conditions, if agreeable by the Planning and Zoning Commission, be in the motion for approval, including item number one. And then if the applicant wanted to come back at a future date for the landscape screening variance, they can. But in order to keep it moving and approve it this evening, the landscape screening is deficient. So it has to be acknowledged as going to be met. But again, if a variance is something the applicant wants to pursue, five of the seven members are here this evening that would potentially vote on a variance request. So I think individual discussions on that may aid in the applicant's decision on actually filing a variance or not in the future, if that makes sense.
Yeah. Thank you. All right. So, we can discuss now, or we can discuss when there's a motion on the floor. I, I have said before, I'm a believer in the code, and I think, you know, while it's a unique property, I do think there should be some sort of landscape requirement buffer there existing per our code. And I do think they can work with staff on what the materials and those sorts of things are through the next phase. I also understand that there's a long area there, so, you know, variance, a variance request isn't out of the question. But I think, for me, you know, I would, I would like to see some sort of requirement, meaning Chapter 1191, for that particular screening of the parking areas.
Can you put up that picture that had where the screening would go if they met the code? So, the way I'm looking at it, the screening that would have to be on the west is only for like three or four parking spaces?
Yeah, two and a half parking spaces.
Yeah, so, to me, it seemed like putting in a couple of trees and shrubs right there wouldn't be a problem down the road. I don't know how you work on down the road, you know, when, when that actually becomes effective. I, I like the idea of doing the screening, but I do think that the screening... I like the idea of doing the screening, but I do think that the screening along the property line is pretty vast, and it is the library on the other side. So I think for me, I wouldn't have a problem giving a variance for that section. That's just my thought. I mean, I want it to be in the code, and I want us to have the option to talk about it, but I think that, given the distance between the property line and the edge of payment, and the fact that nobody's actually living there, I mean, nobody's living on the west side either at this point, but at some point they might. That's just my thought on it.
Could I ask a question pertaining specifically to the western screening? Andrew, is there a requirement for it to be within so many feet of the parking spaces specifically, or?
No, it just has to, there's a four-foot height requirement for the plants at maturity.
Okay. My one question to her point, if you look at where that's at right now, it's right in front of the primary facade of our building that's facing the street. And if there would be allowance, permission to actually, if we do have to put that screening in, to actually put it further west, so it wouldn't be impacting our northern facade that faces the street, that could effectively block, you know, a third of what people would see as a church coming in. If you look at the northern rendering, you can see where it'd end up going. It would effectively be right there on the top portion, north elevation. Just a thought.
Any other comments from the commission?
I would just comment that I agree with Ms. McDonald, that the library side seems to me to be fairly dense as it is. I recognize that this is probably a summer or spring picture, but that undergrowth is not going to totally disappear. Even if the leaves fall off, it's going to be pretty heavy brush. And the distance between that property line and the parking spaces seems to me adequate that I would consider a variance.
Any other comments?
That was helpful. Thank you.
Okay. I'll need a motion to approve with any conditions or staff recommendations. Is it?
No. No.
There's no public hearing.
So what? Oh, it does say public hearings, right here.
There's no public hearing on the site development?
I don't think so.
No. This would just be motion to approve SDP 25005.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve SDP 25-005 with the conditions noted by staff.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Gooden, second by Mr. Paulsgrove, so any further discussion? So the recommendation would be to approve with staff recommendations one through five. Is that correct, Ms. Gooden?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call, please. I'm sorry, any other discussion on the motion? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. McDonald, yes. Ms. Gooden?
Yes.
Mr. Paulsgrove?
Yes.
Mr. Waldenthaler?
Yes.
Okay, so SDP 25005 is approved. The next application, I'll turn it over to Mr. Moore. I will be abstaining from this, as I am trustee for this organization, so I will not participate in any conversation or vote on this application.
The next application, variance 25-003. The address of subject property is 10 West Oak Street. The variance this evening is to Chapter 1175 to exceed the maximum size for a monument sign on the subject property. This subject parcel is located at the corner of North High Street and West Oak Street in the Old Town District. The adjacent properties are a mix of single-family homes, industrial buildings, offices, and multifamily apartment complex. The majority of the surrounding land is also regulated in the Old Town overlay district by the Landmarks Commission. The subject property is owned and maintained by the Canal Winchester Historical Society. There are three historic structures in the property. The first is the OP Cheney Grain Elevator. The second is the Hocking Valley Railroad Depot, and the third is the Prentice School House that was moved to this site in 1980. The Canal Winchester Historical Society received conditional use approval, CU 24-004, in December of 2024, to operate a private venue called Elevate 1828 in the plus or minus 4,000-square-foot OP Cheney Grain Elevator on the subject property. A rendering of the future completion of that building is up on the screen. The applicant is requesting approval to install a ground sign on the property that would exceed the maximum size allowable by code. Up on the screen, this is close to what they're requesting approval for, but I thought it was good to show it this evening, when they are in their original design of this complex back in early 2024. This is kind of a scale of that sign based off of the scale of the existing building. So while it's not anything being proposed this evening, again, it's a really good visual. But the proposed sign, which is here on the screen, is nine foot wide by two and a half foot tall, is an aluminum cabinet that sits on a one and a half foot tall stone base. The Landmark Commission reviewed the design of the sign in May of 2025 with application CA 25-023. They recommended that the design of the sign be approved with just the condition that the stone base matches the stone patio that they're constructing to the rear of the building. The Landmarks Commission further recommended to the Planning and Zoning Commission that the variance to exceed the 10 square feet for the sign face be approved. When looking at the sign on the screen, again, it's very similar to that concept image from a year and a half ago. The sign is an aluminum cabinet with individual aluminum standoff letters, will be ground illuminated, and they're proposing to have the sign single-sided only. The site plan shows they want the sign to be in front of the building, directing towards the entrance to the OP Cheney facility. The name of the event center that it will be operating is called Elevate 1828, really identifying the organization that is operating that facility. The sign, as shown, is going to be located in front of the, behind the parking stalls, basically sandwiched between the parking stalls and the front walkway to the main lobby of the building. While a scaled site plan for the dimensions for the setback of the sign have not been provided, it's well in excess of 25, 30 feet away from the right-of-way, while the Old Town District requires freestanding signs to be five feet away from the right-of-way. When looking at the criteria for the variance approval, the applicant has noted, and staff agrees, that the subject property contains multiple historic structures that are operated by the Historical Society, clearly identifying the space for the private event venue is critical for the operator and the clientele that will be visiting the facility. This is the largest assembly of parcels in the Old Town District with multiple structures on it, so the identification is valid. When looking at the literal interpretation of the code, the applicant would not be deprived rights enjoyed by other properties in the same zoning district. If the sign was limited to the maximum 10 square feet, as indicated. However, the scale of the site and the setbacks proposed for the proposed sign do warrant consideration. Again, there are not many properties within the Old Town District where you can get a freestanding sign further back than five feet away from the right-of-way. This site is very large, very large building on the property. The applicant is requesting to install a sign, again, that fits proportionally into the context of the site. While the sign could be made smaller and moved closer to the street, the proposed request, again, is context-sensitive and fits the scale of the design for the property. Granting this variance will permit the private venue to be clearly identifiable from the public realm. This site identification will not confer any undue privilege that is denied by the zoning code. The private event venue was previously approved late last year. Granting this variance will not detract the public health, safety, convenience, comfort, prosperity, and general welfare. It does not change the economic use in that it will not permit the use that is otherwise not permitted. So staff is recommending that variance application VA 25-003 be approved as presented.
Questions for staff? Anything the applicant wishes to add? This is a variance request, so I'll open up for public hearing. If there's anybody here from the public who wishes to speak on this application?
Seeing no one, I would propose that we close the public hearing. Second.
Motion made by Ms. Gooden, second by Ms., I'm sorry, motion made by Ms. McDonald, second by Ms. Gooden. Roll call.
Mr. Donahue?
Abstain.
Deborah McDonald, yes. Ms. Gooden?
Yes.
Mr. Paulsgrove?
Yes.
Mr. Waldenthaler?
Yes.
I'll need a motion on that.
Chair, I move that we approve VA 25-003.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Paulsgrove, second by Ms. Gooden. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. McDonald, yes. Ms. Gooden?
Yes.
Mr. Paulsgrove?
Yes.
Mr. Waldenthaler?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
So VA 25003 is approved.
The next application for tonight's agenda is Site Development Plan, SDP 25-006. The address of the subject property is 6647 Winchester Boulevard, Winchester Boulevard, west, yeah, Winchester Boulevard. This request is for approval of a new 3,458-square-foot addition for the pickup program, and then also a general site refresh for the Walmart store. The subject property consists of 24 and a half acres located in the Waterloo Crossing Shopping Center. It is in general commercial. Properties to the north consist of several commercial out parcels in the same shopping plaza and share a similar zoning. Property to the east is the Charleston Lakes Condo Community Zone Multifamily. To the south is the ex-church site, Zone Multifamily. And then property to the east, excuse me, to the west consists of the remainder of the Waterloo Crossing Shopping Center is in general commercial. The applicant is requesting approval this evening to construct a new 3,400-square-foot addition on the east side of the building. Up on the screen, just for frame of reference, this evening is the existing store. We'll kind of go over some of the exterior changes with the facility, but again, just wanted to throw this picture up to orient the commission on the layout of the front of the facility, including, but not limited to, the parking signage and paint scheme on that building. The application, again, is for the new 3,400-square-foot addition. This addition will take place near the auto service center. It is designed to relocate the pickup program, which currently operates at the front of the store. Additional site work with this application includes general parking lot improvements, site lighting, site and building signage, and exterior paint changes. The proposed addition is going on the east side of the building. It is approximately 106 feet long by 33.1 feet wide. Again, it will take place between the existing garden center and the auto service center. The proposed addition projects out into the existing parking lot drive aisle, resulting in the drive aisle being reworked for one-way traffic circulation. We'll cover that a little more in the following slides, but if you look at this elevation here, this black line is the existing facade of the building. The blue box is the addition. So this addition is a little bit deeper out into the existing lot than the rest of the facility. A total of 33 parking stalls will be installed with this new pickup program. This will remove the eight existing pickup parking stalls on the front of the store, converting them back into 10 regular parking stalls, which can be seen on this thumbnail photo here. While there are eight signed pickup stalls that were permitted, there are probably an additional eight that are more temporary in nature on-site with signposts and concrete five-gallon buckets. So the original need was for the eight. They've temporarily expanded that to about 16. The request this evening is to rework the site for a total of 33. When looking at the building changes, the existing store is being revamped with all-new signage. The signage itself is almost seemingly identical to what's on the building now, just the scale of the signage has slightly been modified. This is something that Walmart does every two or three years, they rebrand their signage package, redo everything on the building. While the signage itself is all compliant with code sizes, given the scale of this project, staff had asked the applicant to include those details for your review this evening. Most notably, the biggest change is on the far left side of the front elevation, they're going to be installing the word "pickup" with an arrow, orienting traffic to head down that side of the building. Currently, the pickup sign is just beyond this corner over here that you can't see. The building itself, again, consists of five different gray and cream color tones. With this proposal, the applicant is looking to take that color palette, narrow it down to three different grays, and then have all the cornices and some of the flat CMU or EFS areas be the, what was it, cream color, be a light gray color. So kind of talking about this briefly here, some of the most notable changes are the two entry towers are a light gray with some dark gray and cream accents. The proposal will have the whole tower be a single gray color with just the parapet wall and some of the molding details being a light gray. When looking at the center of the store here, again, you have some lighter colored towers with a darker EFS area for the sign. The applicant, again, is looking to have the same gray all the way across the whole front, including the two towers, and then have the EFS behind the sign be the only area that will be a, what they're calling, medium gray on the building. The existing quick brick is not being proposed to be modified at all in this application. When looking at the proposed addition onto the building, the applicant has provided the elevations for review. They have noted that all the building materials and breakdown of materials will match with the split-face CMU, smooth-face CMU, EFS trim, and the architectural cornice, so it will match the existing makeup from a construction standpoint on the building. Again, when looking at the rework of the site on the east side of the property, there will be 33 new pickup parking stalls that will be programmed. Those parking stalls will reorient the drive aisle on the side of the building, so currently this aisle is for two-way traffic with angled parking if you're heading northbound, looping back to park, or also perpendicular parking to the building. With the reconfiguration, the building will stick out into this drive aisle, choking it down to 20 feet in width at the entrance of it. So the applicant has restructured this lot to all be one-way traffic, redoing the head-in parking to be also one-way angle parking. They will feature "Do Not Enter" signs, a new stop bar as part of that. With the reconfiguration, they're also providing a new cut-through down the lot. That way, those that are looking to make the turn movement for the pickup program spaces have a more... have a more identifiable way to get in rather than cutting through parking stalls, and then also providing a traffic pattern that is easier for those going to the auto service center to actually turn into the building rather than going all the way down the parking lot, looping back, and then quickly turning in. With the pickup program, they're, again, showing signage, identifying each one of the parking stalls. The signage itself is not branded with any Walmart logos or any information to discern it any more than wayfinding-type signage, similar to what staff's recommendation was previously for the pickup program. The stalls itself are being proposed to be painted with blue pavement paint per staff recommendations to the applicant, again, to help further identify that that is for a specific portion of the property's use and not just parking for regular traffic. Again, the site currently has like an orange painting. It seems to be effective, so staff has further recommended doing something similar. The pickup program has changed branding colors from orange to blue, so to have the pavement markings be blue to match. With the new pickup program, the applicant is looking to install some wayfinding signage around the property. The code allows for up to five wayfinding signs for directing traffic. There is a limit on the four-foot height maximum for the sign. The applicant has modified their proposal here from a standard seven-foot-tall pole to a four-foot-tall pole to meet the zoning code requirements. This layout here just shows how it's directing traffic to get to the far east side of the building. With the proposed building addition, the applicant is required to plant four new trees. The applicant is showing on the eastern property boundary to plant four new Norway spruce to infill some of the existing gaps, meeting the requirements for the landscaping. Previously this year, staff already has approved a minor site plan through administrative review to update the parking lot lighting. Currently, the lighting on-site is a standard shoebox LED fixture. When working with a different consultant for Walmart on the lighting, staff had noted that if they were to make any changes to the fixture, it needed to meet our commercial development standards for the historic bell-shaped head. The applicant made those changes. The lighting is part of the store remodel. However, the lighting contractor just got their permit five months earlier. So while this has already been approved by staff, again, just wanted to include it with you for review of the overall site refresh for the scope. One of the items that staff was talking to the applicant about and has talked to prior applicants in administration about is there is currently a truck parking problem on the property. The way that the Walmart site was designed...let me go back to the site plan. These large areas here are the only landscape islands on the property. The landscape islands, while they are now required in our zoning code to plant trees based off the number of parking stalls and to break up the lot, they also do a really good job on keeping semi-trucks from parking within a lot because you can only get a maximum of 12 spaces in a row. This site has large expanses of parking stalls with no interruptions, which has, over time, resulted in semi-trucks taking up 10, 12 spaces, box trucks taking up, you know, four or eight spaces. In one day alone, there were six trucks in this photograph. There are two more behind these two vehicles that you just couldn't see in the photo, so I didn't label them. But again, just at one moment in time, eight trucks that were illegally parked in the lot. Staff had raised these concerns previously, brought them to the current applicant's attention in that these trucks take up the parking stalls for the customers that Walmart indicated when they designed the facility were necessary. Again, this is not...the site's currently signed for no-truck parking. Trucks are ignoring them and still parking on the site around them. So staff is recommending that the applicant work with staff during the civil engineering review phase to put together a better no-truck parking signage package for review. This...the current system that's on-site isn't working. So staff, again, has worked with the applicant on the reconfiguration of the site for the revised pickup program. This existing site has several signage-related elements to their current pickup program that were...that are not code compliant. They're basically installed incorrectly and just never monitored. So this refresh will correct those. The proposed paint scheme, again, on the building is being altered. Originally, when this got presented to staff, there were large areas of the bright blue Walmart-colored blue paint on the building. Staff had discussed with the applicant that prior requests for that approval have not been approved by the planning and zoning commission, so the applicant has altered their prototype paint scheme to be more monotone like the current building. So staff is recommending that SDP 25-006 be approved with the condition that no-truck parking site signage and a store-managed enforcement policy be submitted to staff for review.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Questions or comments for staff? And I'll start, so I remember doing this refresh a few years ago, so I do think it's more monotone color palette even than what we talked about before. So thank you to staff and the applicant for that. I would say, just from an observation standpoint for staff, you know, I think those signs say overnight parking, so if I'm a truck driver and I'm parking there during the day or, you know, that's not overnight. So something to think about there. Question for staff. So who is responsible for the parking lot and the driveway between the actual Walmart parking lot and the out parcels such as Wright-Patt, Turbo, Panera, and Chipotle?
Yeah, so if you look at the attached site plan on the screen, this entire drive aisle is on Walmart's parcel. So they own the whole access and frontage to their facility. Recently, staff received a complaint about some potholing at the Chipotle curb-cut entrance. I did reach out to my Walmart representative. They actually had to reach out to their land team to determine, like, if those outlots have any shared maintenance responsibility for some of those curb cuts that are on Walmart's property but were installed as part of another project. So the simple answer is it's all on Walmart's property. The maintenance requirements seem to be somewhat muddled until I get a clear answer from Walmart.
Okay. But I'm encouraged that staff is working with them to seek improvements there.
Correct. Yeah, and I think the applicant can answer this component as well for you guys. During initial discussion with a rep...the rep I have from Walmart, the facilities manager, he seemed to indicate that the whole lot is going to be resurfaced as part of this project. But again, the applicant's here this evening can clarify any of that.
Okay. What other questions for staff?
Andrew, can you identify on this chart where Ohio Health's entrance now comes through?
Yeah, Ohio Health's entrance lines up with this access drive right here.
So we have incoming traffic that's going to come all the way down and hopefully do a U-turn and come into these parking spaces, but then when they come out, in order to get to a traffic light, they're either going to have to go in front of the store or go up to that access road and go over to the traffic light. Correct?
For the circulation of the pickup program?
Yes.
Yes, so...
Because the straight exit out is a right turn.
Correct, yes.
Pretty much a right turn.
Yeah, if they were to leave this aisle, they could either go left to travel back in front of the store or turn right to hit this stop bar and then head north to exit on the eastern property boundary.
Okay.
But yes, all traffic will funnel through this access drive for the pickup program because to leave these spaces, you back out and then have to loop completely around.
And is your understanding that the garden center door is going to remain?
This location right here?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff?
I have a question on parking. So I'm looking at the parking diagram for the new layout, and I'm looking at the current parking, and it looks like it's pretty much the same. How many spaces are allocated to the auto center? And will they be marked for auto center parking so that people that are coming for pickup are not parking there? Because the auto center people, then they'll park in the other lots.
Yeah, currently, there is no dedicated signage for the auto center.
Okay.
The applicant has not proposed any dedicated identification...has identified any signage for the auto center component.
Mr. Moore, I can speak to that. I'm here at the area.
We'll get to you. Thank you.
Yeah, so currently, this whole area is not identified for any particular use inside of the building. It is just open parking for anybody. The pickup program spaces itself are going to be numbered and identified with a type of contact or let someone at the facility know you're there to deliver to your vehicle. So that's kind of what makes this site identification a little unique is the service is being brought to you. While the auto center area, you're actually, you know, whenever you're ready, you're pulling into the building. So you're not being serviced from the lot for the auto center.
No, I understand. But if I come and drop my car, if I can have a place to park. So there's always going to be a certain number of queued-up cars that are ready for the auto center. And so I look forward to having the explanation when the applicant comes up.
Any other questions for staff? The applicant present wish to add anything?
Apologies for speaking out. So I'm Chrissy Hostettler, on behalf of Dubery Engineers, working with Jeremy Eens, my colleague. As far as the auto care center parking stalls, there will be 10 stalls in reserves dedicated to the auto care center. They don't get their own dedicated signage, but they're very faint in that sign, but they're above and in that sort of clouded area where the cursor is currently circling. So those will always be dedicated for the auto care center.
So the auto care center folks are going to know that they need to park back there, and then the folks working in the auto center will have to go all the way back there to get the car to pull it in?
Well, I mean, the stalls are near the auto care center currently, and they're directly across the entrance into the auto care center, like, office space or where they would check in.
Okay.
So as part of the pickup program, they do recognize that when the pickup stalls are adjacent to the auto care center, this is a concern that folks like to, you know, use their...get their car serviced. So they do try to maintain spaces for that.
So those parking spaces for the auto center, is that going to interrupt where the trucks can park when they're staging for deliveries?
No. So those stalls exist today. They currently exist as where they are shown, and I believe the parking, the truck route and the turn areas are further planned north-south of what we're seeing on the screen.
Yes, it looked like the trucks would have to come in one way and then meander themselves around to try to go out the same way.
Right. So I don't believe that this disrupts the existing truck route for this store. The truck route...road is further north of...there we go. Thanks.
Yes, all the deliveries take place on the west side of the building. So the majority happens back here of any trailer storage or staging.
The trucks were able...
What you see in the photograph is illegal trailer storage they do during the holidays.
Right.
So we generally notify them that they're not permitted to store trailers there, but that generally happens come end of September, October.
Right.
Yeah, so this truck...this trailer is not attached to trucks, should not be here in this photo.
Okay.
This is essentially the exact same parking stalls shown on the site plan for the auto center.
Yeah, that was my concern.
Yeah. And that was part of staff's concern on the truck parking.
Right.
Recommendation is trucks use this area now to park, and if you're displacing where they're going, where they're not in front of the store, it's going to possibly push them to be in front of the store. So that's where that signage component becomes...an enforcement component becomes more necessary.
Okay. Because they used to be able to come in that driveway and just back up into the...and now they won't be able to do that.
The truck routing is shown on what's in front of you, so they should still be able to circulate with no issues.
Okay.
Other...any other questions for the applicant? So can somebody answer my question about the parking lot condition and resurfacing?
Ah, yes.
It's not prudent to this application, but...
So after the...per this plan set, pavement markings will be refreshed, especially along the building frontage road. And so after new signage is installed per the store entrance program and their consistency program, the entire parking lot is then going to be refreshed with new striping. That isn't necessarily the exact same thing as completely refreshing the pavement, and I know Walmart does have every few years pavement programs to do that, but the entire parking lot will get a refreshed striping as a result of this project.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant?
I do like the shifting of the delivery over to the side.
So, and a lot of that has to do with just safety for the associates, getting them out of the building frontage road because it's pretty busy there.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right. There is no public hearing on this, Mr. Moore, and I'm sorry. So any other discussion from staff or the commission?
And I will follow up with my store contact, Mr. Donahue, on the parking lot overlay because when I reached out earlier this year about some potholing that was taking place, it was my understanding that the whole lot was going to be sealed and overlaid with new asphalt with this project. So that's something that I want to clarify before we get civil engineering plans that...
Thank you.
You stripe it and then you don't want to pave it because it has new striping on it, sort of chicken and the egg.
All right. Thank you. Need a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve SDP 25-006 as presented.
Second. So as presented with staff recommendation of the no-truck parking signage being first in.
Correct.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? So motion was made by Ms. McDonald, second by Mr. Paulsgrove. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. McDonald, yes. Ms. Gooden?
Yes.
Mr. Paulsgrove?
Yes.
Mr. Wildenthaler?
Yes.
So SDP 25-006 is approved.
The next application on this evening's agenda is a final development plan, FDP 25-001. It's a request for...by Dale and Teresa Shopp, the owners, and the applicant's Opus Development Company. The request is to...for a final development plan for 72.04 acres located at the southwest corner of Bixby Road and Regger Road. This consists of three parcels, one or two of which have single-family homes on them, the traditional farmhouse, and then there is a smaller parcel that includes a ranch single-family home along Regger Road. Properties to the north are in the city of... Properties to the north are in the city of Columbus. They are zoned LAR1, which is multifamily. There's currently a multifamily development project under construction on that parcel. And then the remainder of the Bixby Road frontage there is zone C4 in Columbus, which is a commercial zoning district. Parcels to the north in the city of Canal Winchester are zone LM, which is limited manufacturing, as well as parcels to the east. And then to the south, you have parcels that are located in unincorporated Madison Township, which are zoned rural. The request for this final development plan is for three industrial buildings. One building is 398,700 square feet, one building of 296,660 square feet, and one building of 201,095 square feet. Again, here's the current parcel configuration. All are under the same ownership. The reason for the southern parcel there is this project will traverse two school districts. So the southern parcel is in the Groveport-Madison School District. The northern parcels are both in the Canal Winchester School District. This parcel was rezoned by ordinance 22016, which created the preliminary development plan and the standards for the planned industrial district. This lays out those standards. They're very similar to our existing LM zoning standards. The main difference is being that buildings must be set back 75 feet from any road right-of-way, that the building height's limited to 50 feet. So our normal standard is a 60-foot building. So 50 feet here, the proposed buildings are a maximum of 42 feet. And that all sides of a building visible from a public right-of-way shall be broken up by architectural design elements and must be colored in natural tones. So this is a unique parcel. It's got, you know, it's triangular. It has three road frontages. So it was important when this was passed by council that the architecture be taken into account with such a visible site. Again, this was the previously approved final development plan, 23002. This showed three industrial buildings on the site. The total square footage of those buildings was 961,000. The total proposed here is 896,000. So there's actually less building coverage here. So the density of the buildings has went down. And again, here is the final development plan that's proposed now. Again, this is a total of 896,665 square feet. The code requires that Planning and Zoning Commission review the site development plan for compliance with the preliminary plan. It does permit minor modifications to take place of that preliminary plan. So as long as the modifications don't increase the overall density of the site or change the essential character of the approved plan. So this is actually the third final development plan we are reviewing for this site. The previous two were both approved. Each of those went to less density. So not an increase in the overall density that's being proposed here. This gives an overall summary of the layout of each building, its square footage, and then the overall access to the site. So the proposed site plan proposing the three speculative industrial buildings shows two access points from Bixby Road. One of them is located in the main access point between buildings A and B along Bixby Road. And then there's a secondary access point located approximately in the center of building B that would be more for vehicular traffic, for, you know, employees, guests, visitors, things to go, but not necessarily to route truck traffic through that access point. The first access point's located approximately 800 feet west of Rega Road. It will align, I'm going to jump back and forth on slides here, because I think this is much easier to look at. But the access point between buildings A and B will align with the property to the north, a potential future access point to that industrial property. And so that's why you see that little jog in that roadway as we've had the applicant align that. So we can have those access points aligned.
Thank you.
If we are to get an interchange at Bixby Road, it'll obviously significantly change traffic patterns there. We want to ensure that we're planning for appropriate access for all parcels along this roadway and the potential for future traffic signals if necessary in the future. And then the secondary access point there, that's located in the center of building B, it will serve vehicular traffic for employees and visitors to the site. That access point will be located approximately 1,500 feet east of US 33. This would be outside of any ODOT limited access right-of-way on Bixby Road. So if interchange is constructed, they generally go 1,000 feet from the interchange from any ramp and say that's, you know, that's the limited access area. You're not allowed to have any access. So we did inquire with both the Franklin County engineer and ODOT on the access points. While they didn't give us a firm answer, they said generally this looks like it aligns with future access. If you see the black area on the map that we've put in there, that is from ODOT. Those are from ODOT plans. And then ODOT also worked with the multifamily development to the north to show future access. So if an interchange is constructed at Bixby Road on US 33, the access point to the multifamily will be eliminated. And this will be their new access road that will serve all the parcels on the north with future access. And so this driveway would align with that future access roadway. And so again, trying to account for any potential future changes in roadway access out there and making sure that this parcel aligns with those so that we can have appropriate locations for potential for future traffic signals. And there are two access points located along Rega Road. So the applicant's proposing those two access points to serve, you know, for the additional access points for both vehicular traffic and truck traffic. The applicant is proposing to widen Rega Road to 26 feet, to bring it up to our minimum public standard for a public street. And so that is part of their application. On Bixby Road, they're proposing a widening to 36 feet. So 3,200 linear feet of Bixby Road would be widened to 36 feet, which is a three-lane section of roadway. That will allow for, you know, two travel lanes and a center turn lane. The multifamily project is doing, they are required to do some widening to put in the left turn lane there. So that'll have a 36-foot section going into the apartment complex there. This will tie directly into that and then back all the way to the east to the existing driveway that goes into the center of the two industrial buildings there. And so the applicant is proposing to widen all that to 36 feet. And so there'll be a 36-foot section throughout the new reconstructed Bixby Road there. That is a requirement of council. So in the ordinance 22016 that was passed, there are commitments in there that require prior to any occupancy of building that these traffic improvements take place. The Bixby Road widening, Rega Road widening, or actually the closure of Rega Road. So Rega Road will be cul-de-sac at US 33 north of, traveling north on Rega Road from US 33. This was a requirement from the ordinance 22016 that council passed. Since that time, ODOT has pursued this project with safety funds, and they'll be completing this project this fall. And so that's already scheduled. ODOT will be completing those improvements. So that will be addressed. The next is a requirement that Bixby Road and US 33 have a right deceleration lane installed. Again, this is a part of an overall project of a widening to three lanes of US 33 that ODOT has approved. So that'll take place in ODOT's next fiscal year, which will start in July 1 of '26. So that's when the construction of that project will start. So it'll be widened to three travel lanes, but there will also be a deceleration lane and an acceleration lane from Bixby Road. And then the crossover from travel on Bixby Road will be closed. So you'll no longer be able to make left turns at Bixby Road from 33 to crossover to Bixby Road. And so again, that project will be addressed by ODOT. And there's commitments for off-site infrastructure improvements. So Bixby Road and Winchester Pike, there is a right turn lane that is required there if you're traveling eastbound on Bixby Road, I guess east to northbound as you're heading up to Bryce Road, or you're making a right turn onto Winchester Pike. That improvement is a Franklin County project. So they're requiring contributions to be made to that project. So that'll be done by them in the future. They've required that of the other multifamily projects that have been approved in the city of Columbus. And then they're also holding funds from an industrial project that took place there as well. And so that's again, a future project that'll be addressed. But it is a requirement that the developer of this project contribute to the cost of that. And then lastly, a project at Winchester Pike and Genda Road. There's a requirement for a contribution of $500,000 towards the future cost of that intersection improvement. And so what's happening here is the city of Columbus has done a safety study. They're going to be relocating Winchester Pike to the north. So that'll go north of the Waffle House that's located there and existing right-of-way that they have. So it'll be a new signal there and then relocation of that access point. That's now 2031 and beyond is what they're planning for. So they don't have funding secured for that yet, but it will be at least 2031, if not later. And so the applicant, again, is committing to all of those requirements as set forth in ordinance 22016. They also did update the traffic study. Again, the overall building coverage has gone down, which leads to a decrease in the overall traffic that's generated on the site from what was previously approved. The decrease in that traffic didn't change any of the required improvements. So again, the turn lanes that are being installed on Bixby Road, the commitments for the off-site infrastructure, those will all still be made. We have had our city engineer, our consultant, MHT, review the plan. They do have some technical corrections, but nothing that would change the overall improvements that would be required. We have not received comments back from the Franklin County engineer, who has control of a portion of the right-of-way, including the western access point here, or from ODOT, who has asked to review that traffic study as well. So we haven't received those comments yet. But it's not anticipated that any changes would be required outside of the commitments that developers made from all the previous traffic studies. The applicant is also required via the ordinance to donate. The right-of-way, as shown on the red area denoted on the map here, so it's 7.3 acres dedicated for future road right-of-way. That is required in the ordinance, and the applicant has agreed to do that. In terms of building parking, this ordinance requires that one parking space be supplied for each 2,000 square feet of building area. Our general standard is one for 1,000. So the parking has been reduced, the parking requirements have been reduced. In this proposed plan, the applicant would require 200 spaces for building A. They're providing 310. Building B requires 149. They're providing 331. And building C requires 101 spaces. The applicant's providing 261 spaces. So they're well above any of the requirements that are required in the code. There are some additional commitments that are made in the development text for landscaping and screening, as well as mounding. So one of the items that came up with council review of this when they passed the ordinance is they wanted any truck loading dock areas screened from any public right-of-way by a mound that had a minimum height of at least eight feet. And so what you're seeing here is, in the grading plan, are those mounds that are located along the west property line, the southwest corner of the site. And then along the southern property line, you see a mound between the road right-of-way and the pond. And so those are between eight and 10 feet tall. And so the minimum height requirements are met. There's additional landscaping and fencing that's supplied on there, which is required from the planned industrial text. And so in the lower corner there, you see the fence detail. It's a black stockade-style fence. It's the same fence that's been installed on the multi-project that's in Canal Point. So we had a very similar requirement for their screening, and it's installed. So you can see what that looks like. In the bottom-left corner here, you can see the landscaping. I know this is a large stike to look at this landscaping plan, but it's heavily planted on top of those mounds with shrubs and trees. And so that provides that requirement that you wouldn't be able to see any type of loading dock. We did have the applicant continue that fence in areas even when there's not mounding. So the mound will be installed on top of the fence to provide additional screening. But in between those mounds, there's also fencing installed for continuity. And that's something that came up in the last application, the last final development plan. That was a desire of Planning and Zoning Commission to have that continuity of that fencing. So the applicant has agreed to include that, and it's shown in the plan. The lighting plan, the only additional requirements here are that the lighting, they're not permitted to put wall pack fixtures on the walls. So there are no wall pack fixtures proposed. It's the same, the lighting that is, it's very similar to what was on the first phase of canal crossing here in terms of the lighting design. The light, parking lot poles can be a maximum of 30 feet in height and a maximum intensity of 20-foot candles, with an average between one and three. The applicant meets all of the requirements as set forth in the zoning code in regards to parking lot lighting. In terms of public utilities, the applicant will be extending a 10-inch water main that's shown in blue on this screen. It'll go between the site, and it'll extend north to the Bixby Road right-of-way, which will allow us to potentially serve future properties to the north from that line in the future. And then they'll be extending a 15-inch sanitary sewer. Again, all buildings will tap off of between the buildings on the site, kind of mirrors that main access drive. And again, that'll allow us to potentially serve properties to the north in the future as well. The one that's not shown on here is a stormwater main. So the applicant will be constructing a stormwater outlet main from their existing detention basins, which are shown all along the south property line there. And then there's one at the southwest corner of the site. That storm main will extend down Rega Road to the US 33 right-of-way, and then along the north side of the US 33 right-of-way, all the way to Georges Creek. So the city has an existing utility easement. The applicant will be constructing that stormwater main in that easement. That'll serve this property, but it will also allow potential future properties to tie into that as well. So it'll be a much greater improvement than just serving this site. The development text does require that fountains be included in any pond, and the applicant is noting that they are including fountains in each of the wet detention basins on the site. In terms of building architecture, again, the requirement is to break up the building façades with glazing, architectural treatments, and paint colors to kind of break up the sites. For any elevation that's visible from a public right-of-way, the applicant's proposing a number of those design elements to break up the façades. This is building A, which is, you're looking at the south elevation, which will be visible from US 33 at the top. The north elevation, which is the Bixby Road elevation in the middle there. It shows the corner treatments of the office areas, the entries of these buildings, using window glazing, sun shades, and then paint treatments to kind of highlight and delineate those areas. The loading dock areas would face east and west. And again, along Rega Road, it matches the existing loading docks that face out towards Rega Road. And then the other elevation will be internal to the site. In building B, this would face Bixby Road. Again, they're breaking up the building with glazing and an entry feature in the center of the building. So you have each corner, which wraps the corner of the building as well, so that glazing is visible from the sides of the building. The roof lines are also varying on these buildings. So that, again, is another way to break up the building mass is by having varying heights of roof lines. Those roofs, the parapet walls on those would screen any- Those roofs, the parapet walls on those, would screen any rooftop utilities, which is required in the zoning text, and so the applicant would be doing that with the architectural designs of the buildings. Again, Building C is pretty much a mirror of Building B, just on a smaller scale, but it's the same, design treatments are proposed on that. One of the items we've asked the applicant is to remove the blue color proposed on the building. Again, it requires natural tones on the building. We've asked them to do that in favor of a gray or a brown color scheme, to stick with one of those, rather than having the accent colors, the brighter accent colors of the blues. And so that is reflected in the staff recommendations. In terms of mechanical structures on the site, there is a proposed pump house that's required for fire protection purposes, and a water storage tank that would, again, aid in the fire protection purposes there. It would be very similar to the one that was recently constructed on a building on Basil Western Road that's visible from US-33. If you drive there, DHL constructed a larger facility there that has a very similar structure. And so the code addresses those, the planned text addresses mechanical units, and saying that they must be screened from any public right-of-way. This would be visible from the southwest, potentially, and so we've asked and made a recommendation that additional landscape screening be added to that plan. What's proposed now is four arboretis. Arboretis are probably not likely to grow at such a height that they would help screen a, I believe this is a 31-foot tank, 31-foot-tall tank with a 33-foot diameter, and so additional deciduous trees be added to that southwest portion, this portion of the site, to screen that from the public right-of-way. So staff has reviewed the plans for compliance with the approved development text and the preliminary development plan. A minor modification of the preliminary plan to configure the three buildings does not increase the overall density of the site or change the essential character of the plan. The site meets all requirements set forth in the approved development text. Staff recommends conditional approval of FDP 25001 with the following conditions. The building colors be amended to eliminate blue in favor of a gray or brown color scheme. Number two, the addition of landscape screening to be installed to the southwest of the proposed pump house to screen the tank and mechanical structure. Number three, that the roadway improvements specified in ordinance 22016 be completed prior to final occupancy of any building. Number four, that the applicant improves Regger Road from Bixby Road south to the proposed southern access point to the current public roadway standards with the roadway accepted prior to building occupancy. And number five, that the additional 7.3 acres of road right-of-way be dedicated along Bixby Road and Regger Road, as shown on the concept site plan A10 of the traffic study, to be completed prior to final building occupancy. I'd be happy to entertain any questions you have.
So when you, so number four, the Regger Road improvement from Bixby Road south to the proposed southern access point to the current public roadway. So Regger Road's going to be cul-de-sac to the south?
It will be.
Just after that current church entrance driveway?
Yes.
So whether Regger Road's improved or not, and I'm, you know, when it's improved, I think the chances are greater of this happening. What's going to prohibit large truck traffic from going down there and turning around in the church parking lot, or is that cul-de-sac going to be big enough to turn a large vehicle around? Is there going to be signage? Is that going to be, are there going to be bollards at the end? I mean, how does, what's the plan to try to minimize some of this? I think cul-de-sac and Regger Road's obviously a huge win for this area in general, but, you know, if we make Regger Road wider and improvement, and improve it, and trucks can access Building A to the east there, but Regger Road needs to continue down for the church parking lot drive entrance. Has there been any discussion with the applicant on how traffic flow and traffic pattern through those improvements could be handled?
So your concern is kind of an interim condition of them turning right out of the site to head south on Regger Road and not realizing that roadway's been closed?
Yeah, or, yeah, or conversely, coming down Bixby Road and turning down to enter Building A, but then they miss it, and then they kind of get stuck. I mean, an 18, what's the width of Regger Road to be improved? Is it?
It'll be 26 feet on the improved portion. The current conditions, probably 18 feet?
I'm just worried that, I mean, again, Regger Road being cul-de-sac there makes a lot of sense, and we've talked about this three or four times over the last three or four years. I just think we ought to, you know, before final occupancy or through the process, work with the applicant on proper signage and traffic patterns there, as it relates to Building A and any sort of potential truck traffic that could exist there at that east elevation.
I haven't seen a signage plan from ODOT, but I'm sure there is one. So I think we can review the ODOT signage plan, as well as, you know, add on to that with city signage in the right-of-way, to hopefully prevent that from happening.
Okay.
I'm sure there'll be data and signage and all that that's installed as part of ODOT's project, but I haven't seen those signage plans yet.
What other questions for staff?
So I understand the incentives for the city to have a project like this and what it means from a financial standpoint, but can you just share, for the commission, what is the city right now? So these are all speculative buildings, from what I understand, is that correct?
Correct.
So from a speculative inventory standpoint, where are we in terms of occupancy and availability?
Yeah, so overall, in the city, we have just under 5 million square feet of industrial space. We have just under 10% of that vacant, so we have 476,000 square feet that are vacant. Two of those spaces have never been occupied. So we have a 90,000-square-foot space that was built out for Rite Aid, Rite Aid filed bankruptcy, never occupied the space. We have another building that was 375,000 square feet that was constructed on Robinette Way. 152,000 of that got leased. The rest is vacant, remains vacant from when it was finished at the end of 2023. And then we have one additional building space that's available in the building that's visible on your screen, the eastern building there, Bixby Road, that was occupied by Pitney Bose. They closed in September of last year of '24. Half of that space, they had 261,000 square feet. 131,000 of that was leased by an adjacent tenant, Chadwell Supply, so there remains about 130,000 square feet available in that building. And those are the only vacant industrial spaces we have in the city.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for staff?
Just so I'm clear, the two existing buildings there that are in white, can, do those driveways connect where Building A is? I mean, could a truck who misses the entrance to Building A pull, make a left turn and go into those other buildings' parking lots?
There are currently no driveways onto Regger Road from those buildings.
Okay. I wasn't clear from the picture, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Anything the applicant wishes to add?
I'd like to, my name's Alex Bulwich, I'm with Opus Development, the applicant. I'd like to clarify on the conditions, number five, the donation, the dedication of the right-of-way, that was listed there on the recommendations. We do intend to follow through with that, but we do have a license with the seller to stay in that residence for 18 months after closing. So I just, whereas it says that that dedication we made prior to final building occupancy, as long as that's the full building, that's why I, what they intend is that that dedication would follow close, it could follow completion of construction, so just from a clarification standpoint.
Could you say that again? Say that first part again?
So the six-acre site that's at the western end, that is the residence of our sellers, the Schott's. They have a license as part of the purchase and sale agreement post-close, so will close on the entirety of the site. They have a license to stay in that residence for up to 18 months post-close, so they can arrange their personal residential issues. So we are planning to donate that, dedicate that right-of-way to the city for the ODOT expansion eventually, but we are governed by that 18-month license. So that will probably carry over, you know, somewhere between seven to nine months after completion of our construction.
They're having a hard time to move their operations to final place.
Thank you for that. That's something we might need to discuss, and how we make a motion.
Yeah, so that's, I mean, it's word of this final occupancy, so we could allow, you know, temporary occupancy of any building until, you know, such time as that land is dedicated. And so if, you know, Alex wants to get things done as quick as possible. 18 months is pretty aggressive to build three buildings, but hopefully, hopefully that all comes to fruition and it's not an issue, but, you know, hopefully we'll get someone occupied quickly. But if it does, we have that ability to do temporary occupancy, and we generally do that anyways, up to 120 days to complete landscaping items and things like that, where we allow people to occupy spaces. In industrial, it's generally, you know, they're building out building improvements, and they need to store certain items in the warehouse portion of the building, and so we allow temporary occupancy while those, so we have some flexibility to do that.
And so, a quick point of clarification, so there are no deviations from the ordinance from 22016, from the planned industrial district text through this development?
The only deviation would be, it specifically references a dated site plan. So it says, "Buildings shall be initially placed on the site in accordance with site master plan dated 10/23/23," as shown in Exhibit B. So what they're proposing in this text is just, it would be changed to their site plan date.
Okay. And no final occupancy will be granted until the roadway improvements are done, Regger and Bixby Road, as noted in number four. And then I know the Bixby Road interchange is in ODOT's hands, and the Regger Road cul-de-sacking is set to begin this fall, fall of 2025. So that, in theory, if all goes, this plan should be done well before these renovations are, this project's complete? Okay.
So I have a question.
Yep.
Improving Regger Road, so we don't have any specific building occupancies. In my experience, it isn't normal for them to build three all at once. You build one, you occupy it, you get the cash flow to build the next one and the next one. Do we want these road improvements to coincide with the opening of a building? So if they do Building A first, in order to have occupancy, they have to improve Regger Road, because that's along there. And then when they get Building B done, do we do the improvements to Bixby, and then you could attach Building C to the, that parcel that needs the right-of-way? It's just that, it's pretty vague to me. What do you mean by building occupancy in which building? Because you're only going to build one at a time.
Yeah, our intent would be the improvements would be completed prior to any building being occupied.
So any building?
Correct.
Okay. But it doesn't say that.
It just says prior to building occupancy, so.
Says prior to final occupancy of any building, okay.
Has the applicant expressed any issues with the conditions?
No, other than, again, specification of the lives, our examples of, of all that
Any other questions?
Do we want any, any building, prior to any building occupancy for three, four, and five?
The only one I'm concerned with is number three.
Still struggling with that, sorry.
It's the right turn lane on US-33 will not be completed.
But, Mr. Harry, you did say.
That is an ODOT improvement that wouldn't start until.
2026.
July of '26.
Right.
It won't be completed until '28.
So there will be some pain points temporarily at this project, if ideally all three of these buildings get occupied in a very short amount of time, which is.
Yeah, I mean, the roadway will be under construction, so there'll be significant disruptions everywhere.
Yeah.
Right, right.
But there's a plan in place, so that's, that's an improvement from three years ago, and we talked about this. Any other questions for, or comments for the applicant or for staff? Is there anything else the applicant wishes to add before we take a move? And if, again, if whoever makes the recommendation for approval, if there's anything that you want to add to staff recommendations now, any wording, Ms. McDonald, now would be the time.
No, I'm, I'm good.
All right, so there's no public hearing here, so we'll just need a motion.
Do you view the final development plan 25-001 to be adopted?
With the conditions?
With the conditions.
I'll second that.
The only thing, based off of what Lucas mentioned, again, I think just for the record and make it clear for condition number three, that does not include the two projects ODOT is doing, the Regger Road closing and the Rite Aid selling. Just those conditions in ordinance 22-016 are being taken care of by other entities for other projects.
So for clarification, Mr. Moore, the, for number three, the roadway improvements specified in ordinance 22-016 be completed prior to final occupancy of any building? So.
So, letter number B here for the cul-de-sac of Regger is being done by ODOT this year. This condition number C, or letter C, is a future target project. So those projects, I think just for the clarity of the minutes for the commission's motion that, when we're talking about item number three, we're acknowledging it's excluding letters B and C. Just, again, I wanted to make sure that's super clear.
And those will also be addressed with a development agreement with the developer that'll be considered by City Council later this summer.
So for our motion, so let's, you know, let's make sure this is clean, so the motion made by Mr. Paul Grove was with staff recommendations and was seconded by Ms. Gooden. Do we want to add anything to number three, you know, for clarification based on our
I don't know if you need to. Mr. Donahue, just, again, I wanted to make sure that was clear for our record-keeping.
Any further discussion on the motion? All right, Ms. McDonald, roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. McDonald, yes. Ms. Gooden?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Wildenthaler?
Yes.
Could it be person second, please?
FDP 25001. So it was motion made by Mr. Paul Grove, seconded by Ms. Gooden.
In terms of old and new business, City Council approved the preliminary development plan for the Kroger, Green Gate Plaza site, which includes the future Kroger outparcel of development on Daly Road. That was approved last Monday at their July meeting. The applicant is planning to have an application together for the August planning and zoning meeting for a final development plan. One of the things that I will try to re-argue with on that proposal that was not discussed during your preliminary development plan review, was that after planning and zoning, made a recommendation to City Council, and it was determined by our law director that the by-the-point overlay district standards apply to that Green Gate Plaza site, only where the original 2001 zoning text for that planned commercial district falls silent. So I have a little exhibit that shows what sections of the. So I have a little exhibit that shows what sections of the overlay apply. Applicant's aware of it, uh, they are going to be, um, moving forward with it. Um, it has created some unique challenges for signage that I'm sure they will be discussing in, in, um, next month's meeting. Um, in terms of other old new business, um, Lucas and I met with, uh, the zoning code consultants, um, to go over some of these zoning map changes, zoning district changes. Um, those are being, um, worked right now for the, um, final kind of review internally, and then also, uh, the app, the, the consultants are working on the module number one, um, component for the steering committee's review. Um, we haven't met since, uh, this body, this evening hasn't met since April, so I thought that was an important thing to touch on, um, that it's still moving along and that we are, are hopeful to, um, be on a good, good pace, um, at this point. But probably about six weeks out, eight weeks out for the steering committee to meet, so, um, that, or I'll tell Rick the next time I talk to him, I know you two can kind of stay up to date on that.
Okay.
The council also approved a rezoning for the multifamily project on Hill Road after much debate and changes to that project, so, um, they did require that all six unit buildings be removed, so the maximum number of units per building is four now, um, which changed kind of the scale of some of those structures a little bit. Um, and then?
Wilcox.
Yeah, it also changed the number of units from a hundred and twenty-two to a hundred and twenty.
And it's, and then, you guys haven't met in so long, council also approved the Middleton Farms.
Yeah, it was done earlier.
Was that in April?
All right.
Yeah, so, so right after your last meeting in April, um, the Middleton Farms, um...
I thought it was Miller Farms.
Miller Farms, I'm saying Middleton's last name.
Sorry, it's, I've had so many names.
Miller Farms. Miller Farms was, uh, approved by city councils as well, um, for that Wilcox, um, project with the multifamily townhomes and single-family development. Um, they are also looking to move forward, I believe sometime this year, with a final development plan for their first phase. Um, so lots of stuff's coming, um, keep you guys active.
And the Green Gate extension, is that under contract yet?
It's under contract.
Take it out to?
With Strauss or Paving, yes, so that'll start in August. Uh, so Green Gate Boulevard will be extended from where it dead ends in the Green Gate Cove neighborhood over to Dyly Road and Howland Industrial Parkway.
How soon is that gentleman wants to do his apartments on your side? Have you heard anything from him at all?
No.
He's got a leasing sign out.
I know.
So a couple things for new business. I know this is our, these are continual things, so, um, there's just been a lot of signs popping up, you know, overnight places, so I know the city's working on...
Diego's been very active.
Good, removing those, thank you, Diego. Um, forty-one West Columbus Street, I know there's some legal things going on with that property, but, you know, the, the grass and the weeds and the potential health concerns that exist there, I think are important for the city to keep working through.
Yeah, so just as a public update on that, there's an eviction process that's underway. Um, the, the applicant, there's a new owner for that property, uh, so it has changed ownership. They do have plans to renovate the home there. Uh, they have been physically prohibited from going on the lot to mow.
Understood. Um, Hartman's continues to be an eyesore over the, uh, right of way parking.
Sidewalk parking.
Sidewalk, taking up excessive parking in the street, uh, during business hours for other neighboring businesses. Uh, well, can the city do something like two-hour parking there?
We are, we are working on a better enforcement mechanism, so.
Okay.
We have attempted to issue warnings and tickets and have law enforcement involved, the challenge being that the people, the customers who drop their vehicles off are the ones getting ticketed.
Mm-hmm.
So we are, we are actively working on a solution there.
And then, any update on Culvers?
Culvers is, um, in their civil engineering review phase right now. Um, they are seventy-five, eighty percent complete with their plans. Um, they want a break ground in August.
Okay.
Cause they're, they announced that it, well, I seen in the paper today, they're opening one, um, Hamilton Road area or Reynoldsburg area, Brandon, but just bumping up their too, so.
Oh, I didn't see that. Okay, that's all I have.
I can, I can tell you that Ohio Health has announced an opening date of August twelfth, and they've offered tours to everyone and anyone, including our com- entire complex. We have about fifty, sixty people signed up for tours over there, so, the last week of July.
That's great.
Um, who owns, speaking of mowing, the field between, um, I think right pad and turbo that the grass was four, three feet high before they finally mowed, is that Walmart or someone else?
No, so Castor owns that empty lot. It only needs to be cut twice a year.
Okay.
Uh, the first time between May and June, and the second time between the middle of July and the middle of August.
So they were in compliance, it just seemed really high, okay?
Yep, so they have a while before they are required to cut it again.
The other one I noticed was Firestone, that their grass was way, way high before they mowed the first time.
Yep, um, I reached out to them directly over the phone. Um, they're having issues with their maintenance contractor, notified them that a letter would be sent to corporate, and it got cut the following day. Um, I just sent corporate a letter last week about the right of way not being cut. I don't know if the new landscaper didn't know they needed to trim that area or what, but, um, that has also been addressed.
Thanks.
Any other new business?
Move to a jury?
Second.
Question made by Mr. Paul Grove, second by Ms. Gooden. Roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. McDonald, yes. Ms. Gooden?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Wildenthaler?
Yes.
Timeout, eight fifty-seven PM.